And welcome to the Tuesday edition of Brian's Beat. I am Brian. I sometimes call myself Brian the cab driver. I don't know why. But be that as it may, it is not a day for driving the cabs. We say goodbye to Casey, goodbye to Phil, we say hello to Dan. Because Dan is going to be manning the camera. Why do we have a camera in studio? Because we have a person of importance sitting in here with me, laughing his fool head off right now. But at any rate, glad to have him in here. It's been awhile, what, about a month or two months since you were last here? As we were going over what to expect for the November election, I believe. And now, that is long over and soon to be over is David Owles, great tenure as a New Bedford city council. We welcome back into the studio. I know it's a tough time for you. Welcome, Merry Christmas and all that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, bring your microphone just a little closer.
It's always a pleasure to be here with you.
Well, great.
Times like this, it's an opportunity to spend not only some time with you, but to share some experiences. And hopefully, we'll have a chance to talk about a few things this morning. They've gone over the past and hopefully, look to the brighter side. Turn the page on a new chapter and we'll see what's going to happen over the next couple of years.
New chapter in your life, new chapter for the city council, new chapter for the city in general. So, you know, there's a lot to talk about. I would like, if I can, through the course of the hour, get the top five stories, the Bedford stories you believe are the top five. We can share those stories. Top five council actions, activities, stories, however you'd like to phrase that. And then, of course, the life and times of the counselor and what that counselor will be doing effective the end of the first week of January. Okay?
Serve through January 4th at 7 o'clock. I get, serve and tell replaced. So at 7 o'clock, I look forward to see new faces, new experiences coming onto the council. But I think we're very fortunate. After, I've been there for just about 26 years. I had a two-year break in the middle. But I think they finally put together what I consider a good team. People who are working together. I've served with councils that have been a little more of an aggravation maybe to the rest of the people on the council. Kind of hung loose.
What do you mean by hung loose?
Well, you know, everyone has an attitude sometimes. I shouldn't say everyone, a number of people have attitudes toward it. They take the job too serious. They take themselves, well, I take it back, they take themselves too serious. You take the job serious, you don't take yourself too serious. Everyone is expendable. You come and go. We've seen it happen over a couple of hundred years in the city. But you take the job serious. Some people take themselves too serious. I think we finally have a good group of councils who are working together with the same goal. Bring employment to the city of New Bedford, lower taxes to the resident city of New Bedford, improve the quality of life to the citizens of New Bedford. I think that's a goal that we all agree to or have agreed to. I'm hoping that the replacement council will fall into line. And I don't say that sarcastically.
But there's only one person coming in, there's one person stepping out. To many people, that is still business as usual.
Well, that's what they voted. Well, you know, and that's it. I know that you had a discussion, I think, over tenure, I heard on the radio this week. You know, there is term limits. I think it was in Dave Kane's show, and I apologize. There are term limits and the term limits come up every two years. And, you know, there was a discussion over, well, some councils have served 10, 12, 20 years. But when you look at a business and you say, "We've been in the car business for 40 years", it's because people go and buy cars because service is good, the quality is good. And I think that's the same thing with politics.
Well, I know you do. I don't necessarily equate the two. I believe that you serve your community. A better way of saying it is, do you think that we would see these long runs, if you'd like to include yourself in this fine? If there was no pay or just stipend for your expenses?
Well, we see it, we see it in the school department. Look at, there's no salary in the school department. Jack Nibriga's been around for, Christ, I think, going on almost 30 years. And he gets re-elected every year. Jack does a good job, I think. And once again, there's an opinion or a public opinion to every one in office, whether you're at the council level, the mayor's level, the president's level. But people do serve in the extended period of time with no salary.
But not on the city council?
Well, not on this city council.
Not on others?
Well, on probably-
And certainly in town, certainly town meeting, but also selectmen. Many selectmen serve without pay. Let's, as long as we're talking about tenure, you voluntarily stepped down.
Correct.
Your reasoning and what's the plan after January 4th at 7:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
Not 7:00 AM. We don't wake up all of a sudden and you're out of office having bacon and eggs somewhere.
No, it's when the new, when the new council gets sworn in. You know, I chose. We all, we're all going to leave at some point in time. I think there are three ways to go. You die, you don't get elected, or you take the option to leave. For me, it was time for a number of reasons. One, obviously, was the casino. I felt that that was, that was a benefit to the city of New Bedford. I worked on that for 10 years. I'm probably the most knowledgeable, and I don't say that with ego. I say that with disappointment of the arena. Am I disappointed that we didn't get it? Yes, I think we could have done it. There was no question about it. I think it would have done well for the city of New Bedford. Do I hesitate to say why? No, not at all. I think it's because the administration took their time in signing a contract. And it could have been signed three years earlier when there was more enthusiasm and less competition. When I look at the fact that what we got three years later, basic differences where they moved the hotel from the south end to the north end. We lost about 3,000 jobs. We lost the potential for $12 million. I found it-
But do you think people blame counselor Owles for that?
Oh, no, no. And, you know, once again, I don't think that's a concern. That's not a problem for me. I was disappointed in government, in how government works. And that was part of it. The other, and I think more of a reality is the fact that as I get older in age and get to go to a lot of wakes of friends and associates, I realize that life has, it's like a sand clock. You know, you see the sand running out of it. The difference is you can't turn this one over.
Well, you can, but you don't want it turned over.
You know, you can't turn it over and start over again. So, I take the position it was time to leave. I have, I've missed a lot or had missed a lot with my own two children. Like every city council, and I've said it to some of the councils who serve now with younger children. The first one to leave my son's Little League game or the last one to show up. Same thing with a lot of my daughter's events. I've been given a second opportunity. I have two grandchildren. I get a chance to see them grow and I don't want to miss that opportunity again.
And I can understand that. Let me ask you this though, because you are in real estate. I think many people know that. You get paid on commission. So you put in lots of, people don't know, but a real estate agent puts in lots of hours, whether you're over at the registry or wherever, inspectors. How do you know that it wasn't putting in the hours as your job as opposed to your job as a counselor?
You know, that's a tough one. The difference is you spend a lot of nights away. People don't realize, if you go, everyone says it must be great to be a counselor. You get to go to all the parties. If you want to go to a party, whether it's at my house or your house, it's fun. If you have to go, it's a job. And people don't realize it. But if you ask for support, whether it be from a community group, a neighborhood group, and then they have an event and you don't show up, the attitude becomes, when it's election time, he's here, he's not here the other time. So you've got to go all the time. You're always campaigning. I found that the number of events that I went to, and I'd like to think that there was a noted, I was noted for going to events, whether it was Portuguese events or Kay Birdian events or community events. To me, it was part of the job because people won't call a mayor, and many towns won't even call the city council. They don't realize that they can. But if you're at an event, they'll walk up and say, "Brian, have you got a minute? Can I talk to you about something?" Every Sunday, I would sit down at my home and do my, take all those little pieces of notes that I have from the weekend and file them for a council agenda, getting things done. It's a shame you have to ask a city counselor to get a street done, to get a tree cut, to get, that's our job, that's what we should do. It's a shame you have to use that system.
To be honest with you, that's who I would think of asking, a counselor or a mayor. I wouldn't think about calling up the DPI, you know. It sounds odd, that would be the place to call. But, you know, who do you really talk to over there? David Owles is in studio today. We're going to take your phone calls in just a bit. I am going to talk to him about the top stories for the city of New Bedford. Top council stories also. And you can join us at 508-996-0500, toll-free, 877-996-1420.
There it is, briansbeat@wbsm.com. That's the email, briansbeat, B-R-I-A-N-S-B-E-A-T, at wbsm.com. David Owles is in studio. He has roughly, what, one week, less than a week?
Less than a week.
Less than a week. And he is Private Citizen Owles.
I'm going to be short, more the ways than one.
Well, I thought you were a big man. Let's go to, you ready for some calls?
Let's go.
Might want to put on the headphones, might help. Let us see, let us see, let us see. Hello, welcome to Brian's Beat.
Hi, Brian. Hello, Counselor Owles, it's Dana Rubero calling. How are you this morning?
Excellent, you?
I'm well. I, well, first of all, Naomi wanted to call in, but she can't because she's at work. And she wanted to say what a great, great person you are and how helpful you've always been to her.
I'd say thank you to her, I appreciate that.
She'd get mad at me if I didn't say that. But, um, yeah, David, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting. And just to let the listeners know, he's always been extremely welcoming and helpful. And there were definitely a few times when I just had no idea where to go with things. And he would sit me down and say, "This is how you do it." And I was like, "Oh my God, it's that easy?" And he was like, "Yep."
Well, it's interesting, you just, you are completing your first term, correct?
That is correct.
Let me ask you, it's a question that is certainly out in front of the counselor. Take one city council event, story, vote, whatever it might be. What do you think was the most important, at least for you, Counselor Rubero?
For me, really, it was the work we did when we, when we were able to partner and work with the school committee. And get things done, get money for the schools. And that was, for me, the most important, most important work, the most valuable. And I really enjoy working, you know, with the school committee as well as other counselors.
Well, thank you. And thank you for the call. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Brian.
All right.
Thanks, Dana.
So, that's, would that be one of the top ones for you?
That was one of the ones for this year. That was probably the most important. We were able to mend fences, build bridges. And I want to say a real personal thank you to Bruce Olivera. Bruce, who's on the school committee, came on with some fiscal background. He's an accountant in his own right. He helped develop the information that was provided to the council on a regular basis as to where the dollars were going, what the expenses were, how it was allocated. And that had always been an issue between the city council and the school committee.
So you never had that breakdown before?
We didn't have it to the extent and the detail that we got it from Bruce Olivera. And he helped mend that fence, build that bridge that today is much stronger than it's been over the last 10, 15 years. There were some discrepancies. A couple of years ago, we gave the school committee $1 million for books. Found out sometime later that that money wasn't spent on books. It was actually spent on personnel because of a budgeting issue. It was tough to find out and it did go to the credibility of the school committee and their finances. So, that's aside. It's been a whole new atmosphere between the two. The superintendent's been open and responsible to the city council. There are still some issues. We'd still like to have it closer. They still, I think the superintendent still takes an attitude that they don't have to come to the city council. And it's too bad because the times they do come, they only come for money.
Yeah, I remember. And certainly, one of my top council stories, I've got it sitting over here, would be when Counselor Morad walked out. And certainly, that would, is that one of your top five?
I was one of the two that walked out. And I, it was more of a situation where we were asking for information and they weren't providing us the information we needed. You have to understand, I don't get into education. I have a daughter that teaches special needs. I understand the system. But I wasn't elected to do the educational components within the city. But I am responsible for the fiscal environment within the city, the taxes that are paid, and a responsibility to taxpayers, as every city council has. Responsibility to taxpayers is where's that money going? If you're asking me to pay taxes to support city programs, then at least be prudent in how you spend those dollars. That's how I looked at the school committee. And that was the issue.
And I'm glad you brought up, I didn't want to bring your name in. But would you consider that one of the top five council stories of the year?
As I was smiling when Dana mentioned it, it was. I think, you know, that's a step in the right direction. I'm hoping it's maintained to 2016.
I'm talking about the walkout.
No, I don't, I don't see that.
No?
No. We've all had our issues. We all demonstrate in a different fashion. To me, it was an opportunity to say to someone, you know, "Look, I'm offended by the way that you treat the city council." Was it something that could be a discussion for some people? Yeah, probably. But I wanted to get a point across and I couldn't think of any better. And I compliment, you know, Counselor Morad for doing the same. She was, she was a lot more vocal on that issue.
Let us talk about problem properties. Would you consider that one of the top story issues?
Yeah, I did. And once again, that was an issue that I had a role in. I was concerned because I sat in a unique position. I understood the real estate aspect of it. Not all landlords are bad, although I have to admit there are some that should be addressed. You know, so that was one side. And as a city counselor, I had an obligation to the neighborhood and communities to clean up those issues. What I was looking for was a realistic balance. You know, let's not be so hard that we discourage investment in the city of New Bedford. But at the same time, let's assure that those people who are abusing the tenants, abusing the real estate and giving New Bedford a bad name, those people are addressed at the same time. It wasn't an easy, and it's still not easy. It's still not perfected.
Has it really been implemented? Has it had a chance, when you think about it?
When you look at the fact that, one of my biggest arguments over the property issue, the bad, addressing bad properties, is that we have ordinances on the books. It's a matter of enforcement. It's a matter of enforcement. And, you know, it's not even a problem with the city building department. Those inspectors do a great job, and I compliment them. Everyone agrees, whether, what side you're on, it's the housing court. Housing court is probably the most negligent government program, government system I've ever seen in my-
Well, certainly here in the Commonwealth. I mean, all the rights go to the tenants. Not that they don't deserve certain rights. But if you are, one of the reasons I'm no longer in the tenants and toilet business, as I like to say, is because of how housing court, granted by the legislature, rules on the tenants just about every time.
And, you know, that's a sad part. I was in the tenant business myself. And every young real estate agent wants to be the next Donald Trump mogul. Not with that attitude, but with that business background and experience and to build that wealth chain. You see it on TV, you can do it for no money down. I owned a couple of pieces of property. I invested well. I was supported by my wife. It got to the point where I couldn't handle anymore. I was too good a landlord. And what I mean by that is, you get there to collect the rent and "I can't pay you this week."
And you become Mr. Nice Guy.
"The kids are sick, I didn't get my check." Well, you can't go to the bank and say the tenant didn't pay you. The bank doesn't really care, your problem, they have their problem. That's called pay it every month. And it's a tough situation. In Massachusetts, it's very difficult. I've had a chance to look at other states. In Florida, you have to take a drug test to collect welfare. In Massachusetts, you can collect welfare and sell drugs. And there's no reprimand to it. And that's the tough part.
It is. And especially if you're doing it in housing.
Oh, but housing's getting a lot tougher. They no longer-
Oh, I don't mean just public, I mean in-
Oh, in housing, period, across the board?
Exactly, exactly.
The landlord gets, you get caught with drugs and the task force comes in. They take it out on the landlord's property and yet the tenant gets to stay.
You're absolutely right. 508-996-0500. Counselor David Owles in studio on Brian's Beat today. Hello?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Owles, you are genuine. You are what you call a true gentleman. And you said that you didn't come to the city council to teach or to educate. I hope there was somehow that you could come back for that purpose because we need genuine people like you. You pay attention to little details. Little things means a lot. I never forget when I requested to get a taxi license and I addressed the city council, not only that you agreed with me, but you sent me a ladder to that purpose. I hope that you still at least talk to the young that needs to hear people like you. And Godspeed to whatever you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call. Happy New Year.
And that's a key factor in any government role. It's that personal touch. You don't have to be the brightest, you don't have to be the tallest, you don't have to be the most handsome. People don't look at that. They just want to know that, one, you listen and, two, you respond. And that's been, that's been a key point. And I tell that to every council coming on. And in councils I work with, we joke about that. It's that personal, people want to know that someone in government is listening. All too often, they don't feel that response. They sense a void, that they're talking, but no one's listening.
Well, that's what local government is all about.
That's what it should be about.
Well, correct. That's exactly what it should be about. And for that matter, so should state government and you would hope, the federal government. But it seems there is more of a disconnect the higher up you go.
Correct. And that's the biggest problem we find in community. The closer you get, and that's what I think a counselor's role really is. And ask any one of my colleagues. They're the link between the public and government. Whether it's with the mayor, whether it's getting something from the state government. You're the link. And that's why you go to so many events, so that people can see you, can talk to you, can relate to you. And that's what I think is the most important role of a counselor, most important role of anyone in elected office.
I would have to agree with that. Just that they shouldn't be in office for such a long period of time sometimes.
When you start agreeing with me, then I've got to reevaluate my decision.
Yes, you do. Okay, then, we have no problem. Let's get into it. Top story of the year for the city of New Bedford would be?
Well, it's not the top story of the year. When I look over 20 years, it's, we came up in, city of New Bedford came up in WikiLeaks when there was that whole issue of links in federal government and what government was doing, was the story that goes back to 2008.
2008, I'm talking about this year.
City council, one of the most interesting things that people don't even realize, the city council played a role in Iraqi government affairs. Back in 2008, the city council took a trip up to Fort Devens. We sat in a secure building, in a secure room with a teleconference screen, like you see in some of those TV shows. And we spoke directly to the new-formed Iraqi government. Talking about democracy, talking about pledge allegiance to the flag, talking about that role that government has, that officials have in relating to the public. People couldn't understand that. And one of the most interesting things for the Iraqis that were sitting in there looking at us as another part of, another type of government, was that we had women. They couldn't realize what women brought to a government issue. I mean, they never had women.
Right, right, I can see that.
They have very few now.
You know, I can see that as the top stories in your 26 years on the council. But for this past year, I think also for the council as for the city of New Bedford would have to be the issue you brought up earlier dealing with the casino.
That, to me, that was the issue that was, was one of the bigger ones for me. Because it had, it affected so many people. And I was really devastated. Not as a personal win or lose, but there were so many people counting. Unions were counting on jobs. Casinos are a dexterity-type position. You don't, although they do, they do have positions for accountants and for managers and for security people, a lot of those positions were not positions that required a college education. And when you look at the fact that the city of, probably half the city of New Bedford or better doesn't have a high school education. You know, and we've lost it. We were the richest city in the world. We've been the richest city in the world per capita twice. Once under oil and we lit up the world with whaling oil. And then, once again, under textiles. And now, it's the fishing industry. All three of those faced major changes. We're seeing that with the fishing industry, government regulations, restrictions. To keep New Bedford vibrant, what any community needs is employment opportunities. That's why people go to drugs and go to other issues, because they want to support a family. I, like you, there's not much I wouldn't do to support my family. And I've worked in a restaurant, I've cleaned dishes. We've all had those experiences on the way up. And you need that. I was a presser in a mill for a while. Tell you what, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go back. And that's the inspiration to go on and get a college education. That's what I was looking for. And people are disappointed. Taxes-
Yeah, you know, I think as much as that is the top story of the year, I think when push comes to shove, that maybe David Stern didn't want to admit it while he was sitting here. But the fact of the matter is, the Wampanoans were going to get their land and trust. He was via, you were here the day, he, "No, it's not going to happen." Lawsuits all over the place. Well, it's happened. And I think that would have been a crushing blow to the city of New Bedford had they not pulled out when they did.
Foxwoods and Mohegan Sun are less than, I think, seven or eight miles apart. Two of the richest, most prominent casinos in the world are less than seven miles apart. It's, you know, for every McDonald's you see, there's a Burger King or a Wendy's across the street. For every, for every CVS, there's a Walgreens right next door across the street. Competition is healthy because they, they're better for the community, they're better for the client.
But the state would not have thought of it that way. They would have thought, if you had a casino and then the tribe opens up a casino, they're losing a lot of state money.
The difference is, the New Bedford Casino was three years ahead, almost five years ahead from the initial start. Wampanoag wasn't even a consideration. Had New Bedford opened, would the Indians have opened? Put the shoe on the other foot.
I think they would have.
Well.
I think they were going to go forward. I think they were moving all along, long before there was a vote. Long before there was a sit-down between the mayor's office and KG Urban. They were always going forward.
They're still always going forward and it's still not there.
Don't you think they're going to break ground in the spring?
Checks in the mail, I voted for you. The Indians are going to break ground. I've heard all three of those for the last 20 years.
Well, and people have heard that New Bedford's going to get a casino too for almost the same period of time.
It goes with the rail.
Which one?
The train.
The third rail?
Yeah.
The one that you step on and, there it goes. Ready for some more calls?
Let's go.
508-996-0500. Counselor David Owles in studio on Brian's Beat. Hello?
Hi, how you doing?
Excellent, you?
Hi, David.
Hi.
David, I got one problem for you to solve before you leave office.
Okay.
Between 1426 and 1430 Pleasant Street, there's a dumpster there. Garbage all over the place. I'm surprised it's not rats. I don't know who, I went to the border health already and I don't know who else to call. I mean, this is continuous, continuous problem over there.
So between Weld and Linden?
Right.
Can you do something, counselor?
Well, make the telephone call and we get off the air.
Who do you call?
I'm going to call, well-
Thank you.
Once again, the key issues go by and I should have asked the gentleman what color the dumpster was.
I'm sure you'll find it.
Well, and I don't say that in sarcastic or in jest. Well, and I don't say that sarcastically or in jest. It's just that it's tough to get it moved. Once again, it's either afraid and ABC, but there are some other independents that are floating around.
But don't people rent and you have to get a permit in order to put it into the street and all that?
If you put it in the street, I'm not sure this one's in the street.
Right. He didn't. But he said it was in between two addresses. I mean, I suppose it could be on somebody's front lawn or backyard. But at any rate, you get calls like that all the time?
The best, the most interesting calls I've had, and my wife and I have joked, I only regret, and I tell every city councillor, and the new, the new gentleman should have that same, is you start with a log. Put it by your phone. Because 20 years from now, you'll laugh at some of the calls. Some of the most interesting, lady on Irvington Street called me because she wanted the city to go get the leaves off her driveway and off her lawn. And I'm saying, excuse me? She was very serious. An elder woman wanted the leaves off her lawn. I said, why should the city clean? She says, well, they're your leaves. They got blown over from Brooklawn Park into my yard. Why should I have to clean your leaves? And you joke, people would call at six in the...
And they're serious about this.
As God has made, it was 5:30, 6:00 in the morning. They haven't plowed my street yet. Jeez, I'd look out the window, go back on the phone and say, take their address down very sincerely. Ma'am, do me a favor. When they plow your street, call me. Because I'm a city councillor. They haven't plowed my street either. You know, so I want to know who they take care of first. And you do that in jest. They call at nine o'clock at night because they didn't pick up the garbage before ABC did it. Why did you wait till nine o'clock at night? Turn the porch light off. Trust me, they're not coming. I'll see what I can do tomorrow. It's those kind of calls that you laugh... In hindsight, you laugh at. At the time, you take it serious and try to address.
Because you have to, without a doubt. Councillor, one more session with you. People are calling in. We're going to get to those calls. We also have to take care of a bill or two. I know you know that story.
That's it.
Tomorrow, Marlene Pollack, who is leaving the New Bedford School Committee, will be in the hot seat, in the David Alves seat, or the seat that he's sitting. I don't know. I might change. I might put the red one over there and, because I gave you the short seat because you're the...
Oh!
Well, no, I just figured it would be the right height for you. Serious question.
Yep.
You are leaving the council. Ian Abrew comes onto the council.
Right.
There is going to be an election for city council president. Any thoughts on who that might be?
I, you know, lobbying for that seat goes, or stats, early on. For some people, it started last year. For some people, it's been since August. I think the person who has shown some great leadership capacity and who is sincerely seeking to use that experience that she has is Linda Morad. I think Linda has earned the respect of her colleagues. I think Linda Morad, Councilor Morad, has expressed an interest in it. And I think that she probably will get the support. In fact, I'm pretty confident she will. She earned it. She deserves it. She's been there for a number of years. And that's traditionally how it happens. You earn your stripes for the time you're in the city council. You earn the respect of your colleagues because the council president serves an important role, not just sitting at the front. In fact, that's probably the least exciting seat to have during a meeting because you're the traffic cop. You can't speak. You're limited in what you can do. You have to leave the chair. But it's also one where you represent the council in functions throughout the community. You represent the council at the state level. But you're also the advocate for the council and for council requests with the administration, the person that hopefully is that bridge between the 10-member board that you represent and the mayor's office. And sometimes taking or carrying the water for a specific councillor in a specific ward while you're in talking to the mayor.
A question in saying that, is, are you sometimes carrying the water even if you don't agree with the opinion? Maybe the other councillors voted against you, but you're still carrying that torch?
And that's what a good manager, a good representative, a good councillor, a good council president does. You know, you serve at the pleasure of the council. You serve to represent the council. You were elected by them to be their voice. You may not always agree. You've expressed your point on the floor. You lost. If you're someone who has that personal respect for yourself and for your colleagues, you're not going to take it personal. You move it, you move on. I served, I was the first, I was the first council president to serve under Mayor Lang. And it was an interesting role. There were times when I had to take news back that I knew wasn't going to be readily appreciated or accepted. But you try to explain it in both directions. You know, you try to be an open voice.
508-996-0500. Let us continue on Brian's Beat. Hello, Youroma councillor Alves.
Yes, councillor Alves. I almost fell off the chair when a gentleman called about the rats in the area of 1423 Pleasant Street. You owned a house on 1420, a six-family Pleasant Street years ago. You never did anything about it. And also, you paint your career with a broad brush. What about the issue with Ronnie DeWatt when he sold the house with oil tank in the backyard? You tried to get away with that. I appreciate your career, but don't try to fool the public.
It's true.
Thank you for your call.
It's true. I owned a house on Pleasant Street probably 20 years ago. So, and I sold it probably 20 years ago. So if it's changed, if there's a dumpster there, trust me, it wasn't my dumpster. And the issue over the oil tank, it was in the front yard and we spent a lot of time in court proving that point, that, you know, it wasn't an issue that I was responsible for. But I appreciate you bringing it up. And, you know, I'm willing, you know, you take the good news and the bad news. If I had been put up for sainthood, I probably wouldn't get it. But, you know, I don't know of any elected official that doesn't have terms that they have to deal with. And I've dealt with mine.
508-996-0500. Hello?
Hello. One of the problems with problem properties, with like dope dealing, ongoing crime, prostitution and stuff, is that sometimes the people doing it are informants. And so they're allowed to get away with endless crime. I mean, I lived in one place on Union Street. There were two, there were seven apartments. Me and one other apartment were trying to clean up the place. We thought the landlord would be sympathetic with us because he was a constable and a city official and all this. Turned out, he was friends with some of them. One of them was an informant and his brother, I guess, was a knock cop or something. All this stuff going, it took years. As it stands now, three of those people are dead from overdoses. The landlord's no longer a landlord or a constable. And other people from there have been in and out of jail or haven't been seen.
I think you've made your point. Thank you very much.
It's the Billy Bulger approach to good government.
Or the Whitey approach to non-government.
Non-government. That's it.
Look, I think you've mentioned it. You're not going to be everybody's friend. You're not going to be everybody's enemy. You have to take the punches as well as dole them out.
The two most interesting things for Ian Abrew, the most interesting night, the best night of his political career, and I'll say it to him today, and I've said it to every new councillor, is Monday night when you get sworn in. The best time as an elected official is within the first half hour of being sworn in. Everyone comes over and congratulates you. You're everyone's friend and you haven't made an enemy yet. You haven't voted on anything. So 50% of your votes are going to be people like it and 50% don't like it. You haven't not returned that phone call yet. It's an interesting career.
So we have mentioned some of the top stories, city happenings this year. How about a couple that we haven't talked about?
You know, once again, there are a few things that have gone on. I think the toughest vote I took when I first came on a city council was a $200 million sewer plant. I was opposed to where they were citing it because I thought it was crazy to put it at the most vulnerable part of the city. What people don't understand is, when you go to Fort Rodman, Fort Taber, the sewer plant you see is basically one floor, maybe floor and a half. That's not the plant. The plant is actually five or six stories in the ground and you're sitting at the edge of water. I wanted to build it behind. And then the second thing was, I was upset that we had to pay that kind of money because the feds were imposing upon us without any funding. Well, 20 years, 20 some odd years later, it's come back again. Sewer rates will probably end up going up again because now we have to maintain a plant that is worn out. I think it's going to be difficult. Federal funding is drying up. And depending on who gets in over the next year, we're going to see it tougher. I don't look forward, I mean, I don't feel enthusiastic or, and I'm very sympathetic, probably a better way to go, for my colleagues that are left on the council, for anyone in government. Taxes are going up because there's very little federal and state money coming down. But the cost of government, cost of quality of life goes up, police, fire, emergency. That's a difficult time for people. We're going to see water rates going up, not because we want to, but because EPA, government keeps getting in the way, federal government of local government, imposing expenses, but without providing any resources.
When you say expenses, do you mean mandates?
Mandates.
Mandates. And then you have to turn around. They may pay for them for the first couple of years, but all of a sudden, they say, no more funding, and then you're stuck?
And then you're stuck. And that's a difficult situation, you know, for anyone at any level in any state.
508-996-0500. Hello?
Hello.
Hello.
How's it going? How's it going, Mr. Alves?
Fine, thank you.
Okay. I was always a huge fan of yours in New Bedford. You know, I started off getting interested in politics through Ramondo Delgado, I believe you remember.
Oh.
Mr. Delgado.
Ramondo.
And I think the best thing you're doing is stepping down and moving on with your life. I think you overstood just a tad bit, you know, just a little tad bit. Because I got to see some of the things in regards to you and the things that you've done for yourself and your friends, your close friends. And personally, I think it was time for you to go away and move on. I think it's the best thing you did for New Bedford and for yourself. I mean, at one point, yes, you were productive in New Bedford politics. You did a good job. And nobody can take that away from you. But I do think the timing is perfect and it is your time to move on. And, you know, and I saw this through the problem property ordinance. You know, the stuff that I've seen take place and how you work the system to help a few of your buddies.
What did he do to help a few of his buddies?
Say that again?
What did he do to help a few of his buddies?
Well, he was telling the public one thing and then on the other hand, he was telling his buddies, don't worry about it. They're never going to vote on this. It's going to be vetoed and blah, blah, blah. So he was playing both sides of the fence. He was feeding us one thing and then he wanted a different result. And at the end of the day, the problem property ordinance is a joke. There has to be eight warnings. And the slumlord can move the problems person from property to property and then the fine goes away and it starts back to zero. It's a complete joke. This was a big kiss and thank you to all his buddies that he does business with.
All right. Thank you for your call. I appreciate it.
You know, and it's true. I've never agreed to the fact...